Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm Mr. Ferris, President, 40th Speaker, Board of Trustees. I hereby call this morning Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is now 6:01 PM. I certify that we become the former president. The meeting has been posted at the time required by law. The monthly meetings are open to the public, although they're meeting as public. Comments and questions are restrained to the time assigned. According to this evening's meeting, we're going to move on then to item number 12 and take it out of order. We'll go into closed session at this time under Texas Department Code 551074, 551071, 551072. A voting will take place in closed session. Any acts or wishes taken before your closing after we have that in the open session later in the meeting. It is now 6:02 PM. The floor is dismissed. If you would please, all rise, we'll start off with invitation, and I'll leave that as a statement. This is our pleasure. We really, finally, thank you for this day, and actually have to come and get it tonight to take care of business and serve our community. We thank you for the privilege to serve our community and for your leadership you give us in our lives. And thank you for this staff, administrators, and for their care and concern for our community and their willingness to give and serve all of our children. Mr. Ferris, you gave us wisdom tonight to make decisions you have as the president of the year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the highest land, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all for being here again. We do have a shorter agenda, and we'll try to get to it as best we can. Mr. Chase, it's all on your shoulders tonight, so you've got pretty much. At this time, we're going to move on then to number five, our public hearing. It is both the 2324 budget and tax rate. So at this time, I need to have a motion and call it in the public hearing. So I have a motion.
Summon.
No, second?
Second.
Basically. Okay, Mr. Chase, now I'll turn the mic over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Just by way of introduction, we started the budget process in January this year, maybe really starting in December somewhat, but making projections of enrollment and looking at what our staffing levels need to be in order to meet our needs for this upcoming school year. At that time, we also gave out the campus allocations in February, and they were due in March, and we had our first budget workshop, I believe, with the board in March and discussed, you know, where we saw our preliminary budget was heading. In April, we met again, and we actually approved pay raises that night at the board meeting, and that culminates basically into tonight's budget hearing. All those decisions that were made at that point have been incorporated in the budget. So just to start off with, we gave you a budget document last week, and it was, you know, a pretty comprehensive document about, you know, everything budgetarily that we felt was, you know, would give any reader a pretty good idea, a comprehensive idea of what goes on in developing and what's included in our budget. Just in the first, it's divided into four sections, and the first section, the introductory section, if you didn't have time to really review anything else in the document, the executive summary in that is about 15 pages or so, and that would give you a pretty good idea, a summary of everything that's included in our budget and what goes into that. In the organizational section, it just shows how the school district is organized, the accounting processes that we use, our account code structure, our budget policy, and our budget development process was included in that section. And then jumping into the financial section, that's pretty much the meat of our budget. I mean, that's got everything, you know, all the line items that goes into our budget and what the board approves in each one of those functional categories and how it's broken up within those categories. And then finally, in the informational section, it just gives you more historical information on property values, tax rates, tax collections, student enrollment, and staffing levels. And so, again, it's, there's a lot of information there to digest, but we hope that at least it's informative if nothing else. Just to start off, within the budget development process, you know, the main drivers in the revenue portion of our budget is enrollment and tax collections, and so it's no surprise that we spend a lot of time trying to estimate what our enrollment is. We work with a demographer. Those enrollments figures, you know, they determine how many teachers we're going to need to serve our kids. It determines how much state aid we're going to receive on an annual basis, and it also is used in our facility planning. And again, we work with a demographer, as you know, and this next upcoming school year, we're estimated to grow approximately nine and a half percent, and that's 500, or excuse me, 11545 students, and that's what we use to develop our staffing allocation and estimate our state aid for the '24 fiscal year. And just to present this graphically, five years ago, we were just north of 11,000 students. In October of '22, this past school year, we had grown to 16,200, which is about, you know, a 5,000 student increase. In the next five years, we're projected to grow another 8,000 students. So lots going on in the district, as you know, and we're doing our best to keep up with the growth. As far as property values are concerned, you know, the main driver in the funding formula for this is it just determines what our local share is. So, you know, we get a per-student allotment, and then whatever we don't collect locally, the state gives us to fill up our glass up to that point to where they say that's how much money you should have as a student, for each student. And so it's, you know, important in that regard. We don't get any, really, any additional funds in the general fund for that. What we do get additional funds is in our debt service, you know, our debt service fund. It's all based on tax collections, and that determines, you know, how much debt we can service and how much bonds that we can pay from year to year. This year, we got our preliminary estimate from our chief appraiser in April, and we've kind of been in contact with them throughout the spring and early summer, and we feel like when we get our final certification that our values will likely be up at least 22%. And so just looking at our property values over the last five years, you know, it's no surprise that the single-family residents are the biggest property value in our district. The total market value of all our property in the district taxable value is 12, 12 and a half, almost 12.6 million, or billion, excuse me. Nine billion of that, 9.1 billion of that is a single family, so it's, you know, just north of 70% is related to the single-family residents. We also get, you know, a fairly sizable portion for commercial and industrial, and that would be, you know, retail or, you know, Amazon, Goodyear, and stuff like that that's come online in the last five years as well. The other categories, you know, they're not that big of a percentage of our total overall tax collection, so again, the top two, single-family residents in the commercial and industrial is our biggest, you know, property values in the district. So moving on into the actual budget itself, the combined budget includes the general fund, the food service fund, the debt service fund, and that's what the board is legally required to approve as far as the budget goes. We have other budgets in the district, special revenue funds that we get, whether it's, most of it's federal revenues either through Title I or the IDAB program, which serves our special population. But the majority of our, of the funds that we have to spend in the district are in these three funds. Tonight, the estimated revenue with those combined three funds is 250 and a half million dollars, and the estimated appropriation that we present tonight for approval is 246.3 million. So how does that break down? It's no surprise the general funds, that's about 77% of the overall combined budget. 189 and a half million dollars in both estimated revenue and appropriations in that fund. It is a balanced budget. Food service accounts for about 3%, that's 7 and a half million dollars in estimated revenues and 8.1 million in appropriations. And then finally, in debt service, 53.6 million in estimated revenues and 48.6 in appropriations for, you know, a total of 20% of the overall budget. So moving in to get a more detailed look at each one of these budgets that makes up the combined budget, the general fund, again, that is the largest component of the overall budget. The major sources of revenue here are property taxes and state aid. That's about 70, 97% of the overall revenues in the general fund, and 84% of the budget is payroll. And just some of the assumptions that we use in order to develop the revenue estimate, just to start off with on state aid, if you look in that basic allotment category, you notice last year our basic allotment was 6160, and this year it's also 6160. And I will point out that that's, that number, the basic allotment, per-student allotment that we get from the state, that hasn't changed, and this will be the fifth year that that's been at 6160. We had kind of high hopes this year that the state would actually increase that allotment over what it is currently, but that did not happen as of right now. There are special sessions, at least one that's been called right now, and there may be others that might change that, but as of right now, the 6160 is what we have to go with in our budget. There is a tier two in the formula, the guaranteed yield, it's based on the pennies of tax effort over what's required to meet our basic allotment needs. And we did get a slight increase there from 98.56 to 126.21. I think it's about maybe 3 million additional dollars or so, not a big amount compared to our overall budget, but it is a little bit. As far as enrollment goes, we've already talked about that, nine and a half percent increase is what our budget was built on, 22% property values, and then with the tax rate, a combined tax rate of $134.96. And just looking at the general fund resources of revenue, how it's broken down percentage-wise, locally, we have about 48% of our budget, budgeted revenue comes from our local taxpayers. 51% comes from the state and another just north of 1% on federal revenues. When we start looking at general fund expenditures, again, this year, as you know, when we approved pay increases in April, we established a $15 minimum hourly rate for our custodians, our child nutrition workers, and our aides, and then the other pay categories, we gave a 5% of midpoint increase. Right now, we're not, we're not coming to you tonight with a recommendation on retention pay. That'll be something that we'll discuss at a future date. The staffing increases due to student enrollment, we added 228 positions this year, and our campus non-payroll allotments were $100 for the high school, 89 for the middle school, $81 for intermediate, and 75 for the elementary schools. And so we estimated the number of kids that they were going to have at their schools, multiplied it by that, based on that allotment per student, and that's what they were allowed to submit their budget for. And then the rest of the expenditures, just mentioned maintenance projects, you know, we've allowed for $315,000 of contingency. You know, we don't know from year to year necessarily what might break down from time to time in our maintenance department. We try to budget for some of that, but we don't, we don't know for sure, so we always have a contingency fund for that. We have some money in there for security upgrades, $200,000. We've already approved the bus purchases. That was done at a prior board meeting. We've already got those on order, and we should receive them sometime after the fiscal year starts, but it's 1.2, almost $2 million for that. We don't have any capital improvement money budgeted in the general fund this year, and we have about $1.2 million budgeted to service the notes on our maintenance tax notes and our energy upgrade loan that we took out a few years back. And then finally, on student devices, we've got a 1.3, almost $1.4 million budget for Chromebook replacements, and then some network upgrades, $780,000. And that was, again, we mentioned this earlier, but the general fund is a balanced budget, and assuming that every dollar gets spent next year and everything gets collected the way we have it submitted to you tonight, we'll still have about almost two and a half months' worth of operating reserves, and the board's stated goal is two months, and so we'll certainly meet that. So just looking again at the general fund, you can just see a side-by-side from the last four years and then compare that to the current year. When you look at the current year and look at the prior year's budget, the revenues are up 20.2%, and the expenditures are up 14.4%. And I would point out that you would think with a balanced budget that the percentage increase would be the same as the revenues, and just as you'll recall in prior board meetings when we talk about our budget amendments, we actually appropriated some fund balance from the prior year for projects that didn't get completed in the prior year. In the current year, that's why we were running an $8 million budget deficit for this year. So if you strip that out and do the comparison again, we'd be right, you know, about 20% increase on expenditures as well. So to summarize again, we pretty well talked about what the increases for revenue and expenditures are, and the fact that we've did a $15 minimum for custodial, food service, and teachers' aides, and 5% midpoint increase for other staff, 228 additional positions. It is a balanced budget. We think we'll have about $38.3 million of unassigned fund balance. We still have about $10 million assigned for future debt service needs, so all told, we'll still have about 48 million in total fund balance. And again, that'll be two and a half months of operating expenses, and that'd be an MNO tax rate of 84.96 cents. The food service fund, as the title of the fund would suggest, accounts for the operations of the district's cafeterias. We're submitting a 14.3% increase in estimated revenues tonight. Again, we're assuming a 9.9 and a half percent increase in student enrollment, so it's no surprise that our revenues will go up proportionately with that. Plus, we increased our lunch prices by a dime by prior board action. That's, you know, really, we're required to do that by the Department of Agriculture. There's a target price that we have to set lunch prices at in order to get our free and reduced lunch dispersments from the feds. So if we aren't at that target price, then we have to incrementally increase our lunch prices until we get to that target price. And over the last three or four years, we've, at least, I guess, three years, we've been given free meals out through that coronavirus pandemic relief, that they've allowed us to serve meals free to every student, and so we didn't have, obviously, have to go up on our lunch prices during that period of time, and so we're a little behind, and I would suspect that we'll have to go up a dime for the next several years until we get to their target that they say that we need to set. It's a 19.6 increase in appropriations, and again, you would expect an increase with student enrollment increases. We have additional staff that we have to put on in order to serve those additional students, plus we have additional food costs because we're serving more meals, and so you can see the reason why that would be necessary. It's a little higher than the estimate revenue increase. If you just recall that we did increase our pay up to $15 minimum, so our actual pay for next year is, as a percentage of our budget, is a little higher than it has been in previous years. And so how does that look? Overall, we've got 7 and a half million dollars of estimated revenue, and that's, again, 14.3% increase. Our expenses are going up to 8.1 million, and that's a 19.6% increase. And we are showing a slight deficit in this fund of 677,000. I would point out on that 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 assumes that we were going to hire every single new cafeteria staff member on day one. We're not going to even open the cafeterias at either one of our freshman centers until January is what the estimate is at this point, so it's not likely we're going to hire those. There's no need to hire them that soon. We may put on, bring on a couple managers that are going to staff those kitchens early just so they can get some training and whatnot, but the staff, you know, the frontline workers, it won't be necessary to hire them probably until, you know, November timeframe or sometime in that neighborhood, so we'll save some money in that category. We'll also, now that we're, we've contracted with a food service management company, we also feel like that our à la carte sales and some of the things, some of our sales and our estimate will likely go up from that as well. Different offerings that they plan to offer, it may take a little time to get some synergy built and what all that they can bring onboard, but as soon as, as soon as that gets, you know, more and more, and the things that we can offer kids becomes more available, I feel like our sales will go up from there too and help offset that deficit. But even if, even if it works out exactly the way I have it on this page, we still have about $1,006,000 in fund balance over in the food service fund, so we can certainly handle a deficit this year and not have a problem. And then finally, in the debt service fund, it counts for the principal and interest and related fees for all the bonded debt of the district. 98% of the revenue comes from, you know, tax collections or interest income, so we get a small portion of help from the state for, when they increase the home state exemption, they held us harmless, what that impact that would have had on our property tax collections to a certain extent. So I think we get a little less than $1 million overall in those types of payments, but the bulk of the funds comes from tax collections is the bottom line here. And so this next year, we're estimating 53.6 million in debt service revenues. That's 20.9% more than what it was the past year. And then on the expense side, it's 48.6, which is about a 40.7% increase, and most of that increase, if you'll recall, this past August, we actually did an early defeasance on debt, and that increased our debt service requirement, as well as we issued some bonds in August that would also increases our debt service requirement. And then if you look at the, in the center section there, we're running about a $5 million surplus, and as we've discussed in prior months, because our fiscal year starts on July 1, ends on June 30, we have a big principal and interest payment that's due 45 days after our fiscal year ends, and so we have to have fund balance in order to meet those needs in that, after 45 days after the fiscal year starts before tax collections kick in for the new year. So it's, we're always going to carry a fund balance in our debt service fund, and those are the reasons for it. And so just to summarize in our debt service account, we're looking at a 59.5 million dollar fund balance at this point, you know, at the end of '24. Our August of '24 debt service payments, which will actually be in fiscal '25, is $27 million. And then if we allow about 7 million, 7 and a half million dollars to cover the bond issue that we're getting ready to have in August of '23, that would leave us about $25 million or so of fund balance to either, you know, do an early defeasance on bonds or save for a rainy day in case our debt service, our property values don't escalate to the point that we've been modeling in order to pick up our debt service payment in future years. And so that's all predicated, again, on a tax rate of 50 cents. And so that's pretty much the size of the budget. We still have a few unknowns at this point. As I mentioned earlier, the legislature is in a special session right now, and they're likely to call another one, and so things may change, and as they do, we'll have to come back and amend the budget or make some other decisions at that point. But that's the presentation tonight for the budget and tax rate, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I appreciate your thorough explanation of all that. Any other questions from the board?
I have one.
May I?
So, Mr. Chase.
Ms. Bartol, another question. Go ahead.
So I know you just talked about the legislative session that we're in right now and a lot of the amendments. Can you just confirm for the benefit of the public that the budget that we just reviewed does include a plan for, you know, House Bill 3 that passed, that was passed for current armed security on each campus?
I'll take that one. So one of the things, we do have information coming out about House Bill 3. At this point in time, we haven't received guidance as to what that looks like and the interpretation from the legislative. What I believe we have in this budget would be an amount to meet that need based on our assumptions, but we're waiting to find more documentation from ARM. Attorney at will is from civil legal updates that we'll see real in the next two months as only get to roll out. It's a great question, but I do believe that this budget would include funding to support House Bill 3 and the other requirements there, because yes, it is not fully mandated mandate, let's just say.
Right.
But we'll come back to you with more information on that as well in the next two months.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bartol, is there a particular part of House Bill 3 that you need to clarify more?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we're in a place of personal.
May you work with the question?
Where it talks about armed security on each campus, and I know we do, what we've learned is that is still very much unfounded, but we're doing what we can on our side. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience in public hearing? If there's no further questions, then from the audience, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Summon.
Miss Dobbs, hold on a second.
Second.
Dr. Mudiya?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. It's now 7:25, the public hearing is closed. Moving on to item six, reports. Our monthly financial report, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight's financial report is reporting details through the months of May 2023. Just starting off with, the general fund revenues collected to date is 129.2 million, or 82% of the amount estimated, and for prior year comparative purposes, we were at 84% at this same time last year. General fund expenditures to date was 151.5 million, or 91% of the amount appropriated, and again, for comparative purposes, last year we were at 89%. Moving on to food service revenue, we collected 2.8 million in student lunches and à la carte sales, 3.9 million in federal reimbursements, for a total of $6.9 million year-to-date revenue, and that's 107% of the amount estimated. And I'll just point out that, you know, this, this year really is the first year in the last probably two or three years that we've had a normal year again, and so, you know, our estimates on revenue clearly were a little off, but, you know, it's off in a good way, not a bad way. Reimbursed meals served to date was 98,000, excuse me, in the month of May, and then prior year, again, through this coronavirus pandemic, it was, you know, very difficult to estimate revenues in this fund, but we were at 120% collected last year. But I, when we get, I think next year, we'll have a more normal revenue estimate, I think, and it'll be much more comparable, I'd just say, like 2019 and prior. Food service expenditures year-to-date was 5.7 million, and that's 71% of the amount estimated or appropriated, excuse me, and if you strip out the amount that we appropriated for capital expenditures of $1.5 million back in March, we'd be more like 89% or so expended, and that's, that's pretty comparable to where we would have been, you know, three or four years ago. So prior year, we were at 81%, but again, that was a pandemic year, and so it's hard to make a good comparison with that. But all in all, I think we're in really good shape in our food service fund. And I don't have a debt service report for you tonight. We're 100% expended and collected in that fund, so there's really not a whole lot of activity to report, but do want to report the cash investment balances on hand in the general fund, food service, debt service, and capital projects at the end of May was 372.6 million dollars, most of which was in our capital project fund. So I think that concludes the report. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase, for the background work. Moving on to item seven, public forum. It's a public forum, we do have a speaker that signed up to speak tonight. The board will allow five minutes for tonight's public comments portion of meeting. Each speaker will be allotted time to do that. Please respect the privacy of others who are frank and identifying students and employees that are community members by name or request that the comments made subject to positive, negative, or discourages are respectful. Speakers who provide details about specific complaints will be stopped and referred to the district's administration for information about the grievance process. The board may not respond to comments made and questions asked by the public. At this time, I'd like to ask Chris Gibbs to come to the microphone.
Mr. Ferris. I'll come.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here because of the reports that you all just heard. I'm the executive director of Facility Services for you new school board members who haven't met me yet, but I have the best job in the school district. I really do. Say, well, what do you do? Well, I'm the head maintenance man, I'm the head groundskeeper, and I'm the head custodian, and I have the best job in the district because we get to help people solve their problems all day. My phone- My phone will ring, and it could be anything from I have a commode stopped up, the air conditioner working, or I have a snake at the front door, I have a dog in the playground. We solve these problems, that's what we do, we do it with people. But to do that, it takes a lot of people, and because of the report that y'all just heard, and the resolutions y'all passed here a few months ago, we've been able to fulfill the slots that we need to fill every vacancy that we have. I was talking to my director custodians today, and he said that if everything works out with the interviews that he has, by the end of next week, when the lady comes back from HR that processes our applications, we should add every spot filled, including the new campuses next year, with the exception of the ninth grade centers, we won't hire them all until later on in December. So I'm here to say thank you for doing that, because it's been life-changing for some of our custodians. And to brag a little bit is to say that we developed a pretty good relationship with our people. We lost a lot of people when the other districts went up to fifteen dollars an hour. Well, we've had two come back from Mesquite, we've had one come back from Crandall, and she brought two of her friends. We've brought one back from Terrell, he brought two of his friends, so they all want to come to work at Forney ISD, but I'm going to tell you why. I'm in maintenance, but I haven't always been in maintenance. I was actually a classroom teacher, principal, assistant principal, even got superintendent certification, so I know a little bit about what it takes to run a school district, and I'll tell you what, it starts with leadership. And the leadership that y'all have demonstrated right there is second to any school district I worked for. I've worked for four different school districts, and I have seen some dysfunctional school boards, and I have never witnessed that with you. And I'm just saying thank you because of y'all have allowed me to do my job, which is helping these other people. Again, our leadership from the school board down all the way to the teachers, I see this every day when I'm on the campuses, and it starts with the positive attitude that our superintendent springs. I've mentioned that to him a time or two, and I'm just proud to work for Forney ISD, and I want to say thank you on behalf of my department, and all the custodians, and the maintenance men, and the grounds crew. If you ever have a question, call me, because everybody else does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on into item eight, the consent agenda. Eight A is approved then from the May thirtieth monthly board meeting. Eight B is approved of budget amendments. Eight C is approved in Mesquite, Assie, Reasonable Day School for the debt expenses. The board may take action on each separately or collectively. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I'm with the board collectively approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion, it's first call, prepare a second.
Second.
Please, statement. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Can I hear that? Moving on to item nine, consideration possible approval of twenty-two twenty-four budget. Chase.
Uh-oh. I don't know what happened here, Kristen. Sorry about that. Let me have this, there we go. Sorry about that, I guess I hit the wrong arrow key here. We've had, just, just had our budget hearing tonight, discussed the, the general fund, the food service, and debt service fund at length. Again, the revenues that we're, we're estimating right now is two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-point-five million, expenditures is forty-six-point-three million, and that's the budget that we would recommend that you approve tonight, and if you, if you have any other questions, I'd, you know, happy to answer them, but this, that's the administrative recommendation that you approve the budget that's, that's before you.
Doctor Cherry, any further comments? Well, first just like to thank John and his team, as you guys see, this is a pretty good job that they've managed and just do a great job. So, John, just want to say thank you and his team for the work that you guys do to bring us this budget every year. Also, just wanted to remind the board too, that there's still a lot happening in Austin that we fully expect to come back with some additional discussion, hopefully with some additional funding even in the future. Just as a reminder, what John said, we're continually being funded on the same amount as we were in two thousand nineteen, and you guys understand what inflation has looked like over the past five years. So, we're doing a lot with a little, eighty-four percent of our budget this year is about people, and we're in the people business, but you guys, what we're bringing to you tonight is really about investing in our people for our kids. There are multiple safety nets in place still across this budget with the fund balance on the general fund side as well as the debt service side, as we've discussed in the past, so you're doing a great job of staying conservative to get us to this point where we're healthy from that perspective. Tonight, we would recommend approval of the budget as presented, and just want to say thank you to John and his team for putting our work into the center.
I would think you all prepared a foot on that, because I know it's a challenge, and we've been out here before as a kind of legislative years when you're having to go blindly and know that you're going to have something later after you get the rest of the story. Headlines make the news, but they don't always pay bills, so with that in mind, do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve the twenty-two twenty-three, twenty-two twenty-four as presented.
Have a motion, a statement, do I have a second?
Second.
First call, turn. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Can I hear that? Chase. Then, our next item from Mr. Chase, consideration possible approval, excuse me, consideration possible approval of the, as I said, that's me, for example, I'm on my, I'm on my board here. So, we're having a stop and plan now. Mr. Chase?
Yes, Mr. Ferris. As we mentioned earlier, the compensation plan, we've actually approved, we're approving it in a two-step process this, this year. You've approved the compensation plan for the employees, the salary part of it, back in, in April, and what's being presented to you tonight is the, the stop-ins and extra duty pay and other pay that we pay in the district outside of that, that, that plan that was approved in April, and that would, this would include our substitutes, our extra duty pay to teachers for duty outside of the duty day, stop-ins for coaches and for fine arts and so forth. And so, you have the stop and plan there in front of you, or you had that for review over the weekend, and so if there's anything you'd like to discuss about, I'd be happy to discuss that, but if not, our recommendation is that you approve it as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I have a question from the stocks.
So, the, it says to be determined how employee retention stipend, just to be clear, that is required to see what many funding is required, I'll be getting that off.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just to make sure that that is clear. Thank you.
Here are no further questions, so I have a motion from the board.
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the twenty-two twenty-three, twenty-two twenty-four, please second the plan as presented.
If it's vacant, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Can I hear that? Item number twelve, it's closed session, we know earlier from closed session, we'll move on then to item thirteen, consideration possible approval of ratification of all professional contract personnel, do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the ratification of the employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in place session.
Please, this vacant, I have a second.
Second.
Dr. Mudiya, thank you very much, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Can I hear that? Item number twelve, it's closed session, we know earlier from closed session, we'll move on then to item thirteen, consideration possible approval of ratification of all professional contract personnel, do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the ratification of the employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in place session.
Please, this vacant, I have a second.
Second.
First call, turn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Can I hear that? Thank you very much. Doctor Cherry, I turn over item fourteen to you.
Thank you, sir, just very briefly, we do have an Independence holiday coming up on July fourth, so we'll possibly be closed at that time. Just a reminder, competition will be August the second, August the second, one more year, we have to travel down eighty, and then we'll be at home for years to come after that, but we'll give you more information on that as we draw closer. And then, don't forget our regular scheduled August seventh board meeting, that'll be coming up as we draw here the first day of school on August tenth, if you can believe it, we're getting closer, and so, enjoying summer, but ready to have those kids back. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Cherry. Without any further celebrations, we will call this meeting adjourned, it's seven forty-one P M.